I would like to thank everybody for coming tonight to our special town meeting that starts at 6:00 PM. And at this time, we'll rise and salute the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the true republic, which is standing one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll ask our town clerk to read the article.
To either of the constables of the town of Rutland in the county of Worcester, in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to warn and notify, notify, I'm sorry, and warn the inhabitants of said town qualified to vote in elections and in town affairs to meet at the Glenwood Road Elementary School Auditorium in Sed, Rutland on Saturday, the 12th day of May, 2018, at 6:00 in the evening, then and there to act on the following articles.
Just a few housekeeping rules. Everyone out in front of me, directly in front of me or in the bleachers should have a pink card to vote. All our guests are over here to the far left. As a whole, to my left is the selectman, town clerk, town council, and town administrator. Town administrator, to my right is the finance. Let's get started with Article One. Article... You took my piece of paper. I only have the left with motions. Sorry about that, folks. Article One, to see if the town will vote to appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money to the snow and ice supply account 001-423-5400 for the fiscal year 2018. Or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate from free cash the sum of $77,458.96 and transfer from DPW highway wages overtime and standby account 001-421-514000 to the sum of $78,660.29 for the sum of $156,119.25 to the DPW snow and ice supply account 001-423-5400 for fiscal year 2018.
Motion made. Seconded recommendation of the finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends favorably on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? All those in favor, please signify by raising your pink cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to Article Two, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds a sum of $2,272.83 to the Verizon for telephone services charged for the prior fiscal year. Or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from the DPW highway construction maintenance supplies account 001-422-5530-0000, the sum of $2,272.83 to Verizon for telephone service charges of prior fiscal year.
Second.
Motion made. Seconded recommendation of the finance, please.
Finance committee recommends favorably on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Please state your name and address.
Darren Ross, five hundred and twenty-one. It must be a title, because it says 2012. How come we're waiting 2012 to pay this? You're working for me. I'm paying you. Five years later. Actually, six years later. What's going on, okay? The truth is out of that.
My understanding from the DPW superintendent is that this amount has carried on the invoices, and he has traced it back to FY12. So they've seen it as an outstanding balance, but he has traced it back to FY12.
Mr. Moderator, for the finance also, this is an accurate amount. I guess Margaret has explained it well enough, but I have made a deal. This amount will be reduced to $1,700, and as soon as we can pay this bill, that amount will be reduced to 17 from 22. Okay?
Is there any other discussion?
All right, then. I want to clarify. So if the amount is reduced to $1,700 from the $2,200, that means that the balance that's going to be transferred under this article will revert to the town's free cash.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article Three. I'm wrong. Might be the first time today, but I am wrong. I have to have a nine-tenths vote on this, so I'm going to do it again, just to clarify it, and then as long as everyone votes favorably, I can call it unanimous for a nine-tenths. This is for a passed due bill. Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All opposed, same sign. I declare a unanimous vote, so it is nine-tenths or greater. Thank you. Moving on to Article Three, to see if the town will vote to transfer from Article One of November 24, 2011, special town meeting, WWTP feasibility study 201-440-5800-008, the sum of $26,597.15 to the FY18 sewer enterprise operating budget purchase services account 201-440-5200-0000. Or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from Article One of the October 24, 2011, special town meeting wastewater treatment plant feasibility study 201-440-5800-008, the sum of $26,597.15 to the fiscal year 18 sewer enterprise operating budget purchase services account 201-440-5200-0000.
Motion made. Seconded recommendation of the finance, please.
Finance committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to Article Four, to see if the town will vote to transfer from the FY18 sewer enterprise operating budget purchase services account 201-440-5200-0000, the sum of $19,528.68 to the city of Worcester for sewer transport charges for the prior fiscal year. Or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from FY18 sewer enterprise operating budget purchase services account 201-440-5200-0000, the sum of $19,528.68 to the city of Worcester for sewer transport charges for the prior fiscal year.
Motion made. Seconded recommendation of the finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none, we will vote, but this is also a nine-tenths vote as well. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All opposed, same sign. Motion is unanimous. Nine-tenths. It is passed. Article Five, to see if the town will vote to transfer from the Glenwood School roof account 361-300-5800-001, as voted under Article Six of the May 7, 2016, special town meeting, the sum of $2,480, and from the Wachusett, excuse me, Naquad Green Project Fund, 360-300-5800, the sum of $9,220 for the sum total of $11,700 for the materials and labor to construct an exterior paved walkway at Glenwood Elementary School, including all incidental and related expenses. Or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $2,480 from the Glenwood School roof account 361-300-5800-001, as voted under Article Six of the May 7, 2016, special town meeting, and from the Naquad Green Project Fund, 360-300-5800, the sum of $9,220 for the sum of $11,700 for material and labor to construct the exterior paved walkway at Glenwood Elementary School, including all incidentals and related expenses.
Motion made. Seconded recommendation of the finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to Article Six, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds free cash the sum of $3,600 to purchase and equip three desktop computers for the Rutland Public Library. Or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate from free cash the sum of $3,600 to purchase and equip three desktop computers for the Rutland Public Library.
Motion made. Seconded recommendation of the finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends favorably on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to Article Seven, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $38,177.42 from the primary building account 305-192-5800, as voted under Article Five of the December 13, 2004, special meeting for the onsite crushing of materials at the Department of Public Works to be used for the construction of the municipal parking area or a portion of town-owned land located at 17 Palm Augustet Road, as shown as parcel 042-A-6 on the Rutland Assessors Map, including all incidental and related expenses. Or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $38,177.42 from the primary building account 305-192-5800, as voted under Article Five of the December 13, 2004, special town meeting for onsite crushing of materials at the Department of Public Works to be used for the construction of a municipal parking area on a portion of town-owned land located at 278 Main Street, and shown as parcel 042-A-10 on the Rutland Assessors Map, including all incidental and related expenses.
Motion made. Seconded recommendation of the finance, please.
Finance committee recommends favorably on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Is there any other business to come before us at this time that you're aware of? At this time, I would accept the motion to adjourn the special town meeting. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All opposed, same sign. Special meeting is now adjourned. Folks, you're going to have to take your pink cards, exit the room, and you will receive a new card to come in for the annual town meeting. Thank you for coming.
...meet at the Glenwood Elementary School Auditorium at 65 Glenwood Road in Sed, Rutland on Saturday, the 12th day of May, 2018, at 7:00 in the evening, there and then to vote on the following articles.
At this time, I would like to call Rachel Douglas, here to sing our national anthem, and I'd like to ask everyone to rise.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, for the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, almost bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave, for the lands of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you very much, Rachel. At this time, would everybody please, please stand, please stay standing. And at this time, I would like to ask Ron Marsh to come forward and give our invocation at the time, and then we'll do the flag in a moment. Please.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we give thanks for the public servants of the past who have kept us safe, maintained our roadways and parks, educated our children, and governed our town. We also remember those who have led our religious institutions and filled countless roles as volunteers in our many civic organizations. Their collective service has enriched our community and set an example for our citizens. Tonight, may we be intent on continuing their good work. As we meet to serve our community, we ask for your guidance to use our resources wisely and well. May we represent all members of our community fairly and make decisions that promote the common good. As we remember the past, we ask for strength and wisdom to address the needs of the present, being ever mindful of our responsibility to those who will follow us. May our minds be open and our discussions respectful. We seek your blessings on our efforts here tonight. Amen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Marsh. And at this time, will we salute our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the true republic, which is standing one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming. I'd like to introduce the people to up here at the front of the room with myself. Starting here, directly on my left is the town clerk, which is Anita Carlson. To her left is our town legal counsel, Lauren Goldberg. To her left is our town administrator, which is Margaret Norwell-Narwitz. Thank you. Chairman of the select board is Skip Clark. Besides Skip is Sheila Dibbs. Besides Sheila Dibbs is Wayne Walker, and down at the far end is Michael Pantos. To my right is my finance board members. Chairman of the board is Lyndon Nichols. Vice chair, I believe, is nobody. Is, oh, excuse me, is Karen Norwell is to the right of Lyndon Nichols. Vice chair is Cheryl Vernon, sitting in the middle of the room. Carla Albindo is to Cheryl's right, and down there on the far end is Thomas Rochaller on the finance board tonight. Everyone should have a green card that looks similar to this to be able to vote with them. The majority of the people in front of me should have this. The people over on our far left are our fine guests tonight, and there should be no voters over there on the far left tonight. If we want to speak on a subject, please come to the podium directly in front of me, and you're going to state your name and address, and we're going to try to move things right along. So if I ask for any discussion, please start to move to the mic before you're recognized, and then we'll just wait in line in courtesy and do all that. If there's any questions, please don't hesitate to ask. There has been a suggestion that we take Article Two out of order due to some other votes in it, so it is the wish of the finance board that we take Article Two out of order and place it as after Article Eight. So we're going to take Article Two out of order and put it under Article Eight.
So moved.
So moved. Is that seconded?
Seconded.
Motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of moving Article Two to after Article Eight, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you for understanding on that. We'll get started at this time. Article One, to hear the annual report of the town offices and committees. Does this motion receive support? Recommendation of the finance, please.
Finance committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We're going to skip Article Two, as we just stated. We're going to move on to Article Three. Article Three is to see if the town will vote to raise such sums of money as may be necessary to defray the expenses of the Southern Worcester County Regional Vocational School Assessment for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, and to determine whether the town will appropriate money therefore to be provided by taxation or by appropriation from available funds, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $453,047 to defray the expenses of the Southern Worcester County Regional Vocational School Assessment for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, set amount for regional school district to be inclusive of all costs required under the Education Reform Act or any other applicable law, including all vocational education tuition payments made directly by the town of Rutland.
Does this motion receive support? Motion made. Seconded recommendation of the finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article?
I'd like to, through you, ask the finance committee, is this the recommended or the asking from the school district itself? Did they ask for this amount of money?
Yes, I believe it's a little over $1,000 over last year's budget.
But this is what they asked for?
Yes.
You didn't change it?
No.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article Four, to see if the town will vote to raise such sums of money as may be necessary to defray the expenses of the Wachusett Regional School District minimum local contribution for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, and to determine whether the town will appropriate money therefore to be provided by taxation or by appropriation from available funds, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $6,954,143 to defray the expenses of the Wachusett Regional School District minimum local contribution for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018.
Does this motion receive support?
Seconded.
Motion made. Seconded recommendation of the finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion?
I asked the same question to the chair of the finance committee. Is this the recommenda... Is this the amount of money that the school district asked for, or have you people changed it?
It is the full amount requested.
This is the request of the school committee?
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article Six, to see if the town will vote to raise such sums of money as may be necessary to defray the expenses of the Wachusett Regional School District Transportation Assessment for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, and to determine... Sorry, folks. Moving right along. Things are going so well. To see if the town will vote to raise such, excuse me, going back to Article Five, I was reading accidentally Article Six. Article Five, to see if the town will vote to raise such sums of money as may be necessary to defray the expenses of the Wachusett Regional School District Debt Service Assessment for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, and to determine whether the town will appropriate money therefore to be provided by taxation or by appropriation from available funds, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $610,209 to defray the expenses of the Wachusett Regional School District Debt Service Assessment for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018.
Motion made. Seconded recommendation of the finance, please.
Finance committee recommends favorably on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article Six, to see if the town will vote to raise such sums of money as may be necessary to defray the expenses of the Wachusett Regional School District Transportation Assessment for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, and to determine whether the town will appropriate money therefore to be provided by taxation or by appropriation from available funds, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,025,355 to defray the expenses of the Wachusett Regional School District Transportation Assessment for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018. for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018.
Motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the finance, please.
Finance committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article?
Carolyn Seaman, 23, Billy Lane. I'm just wondering if there's ever been a study done on the amount or the number of buses that are used for the transportation of the students. My observation, many times through walking through the town and driving through the town, there may be a half a dozen students on one bus, six, you know, seven on another, three on another. Maybe there's one with additional students, but it seems to me there's so many buses and they're not being utilized appropriately. I'm wondering if there's ever been a study done on it.
Daryl McCall, 29 Emerald Road, Superintendent, Wachusett Regional. So, great question. I hear that in most of the communities. We're regional school districts, so we provide transportation to all of the students and we get reimbursed for that transportation. We currently have 50 buses, and even at 50 buses, it's not enough to cover all of the students ultimately that we need to bring to school, back and forth to school. So you'll probably see that at the high school level, where we have a lot of students actually drive back and forth to work. But we are obligated by law to provide a bus seat for each one of those students.
Carolyn Seaman, 23, Billy Lane. I understand that, but I'm talking about the, you know, like this school and the Naqwaq school is where I've observed this older and over again.
Yeah, so what you'll also see is, again, we have to pay for 50 buses, no matter what. And we get those during the entire day. So some routes are going to be more full than others. So we have some buses that have 72 students. We have other buses that might have 45 to 50 students. And, you know, then it really depends upon the number of students going to school on a particular day. We also have, a lot of parents have bring their kids to school every day. We still have to provide transportation to them if they live outside of a mile and a half of the school.
Is there any other discussion on this article?
Marie Russell, 23, Birchwood Road. I also have a question on the buses. Superintendent mentioned that we have to pay for the 50 buses. Does that exclude the amount of runs? Or do we just have to pay for 50 buses a day regardless of how many runs? If it is regardless of how many runs, then can we contract for smaller buses? Because I agree wholeheartedly. Giant buses are on the road, and you see six kids in them. If it was my budget and I was planning that bus route, I would surely be changing it
So another good question. A bus and a van are almost the same amount of money, believe it or not.
We pay the same?
Yep, yep.
Right, just question then, who's paying for that?
Y'all are.
I mean...
I am, you are, the school district.
You're planning that out there?
What do you mean?
That we are required to pay the same amount for a small van versus a...
That's how the contracts work, you know, ultimately. So when we just went out for our last transportation contract, Joan, I think it was in 2014, I believe, or 2015, we're the largest regional school district in the entire state. We had one bid. So with one bid, we have no other choice but to go with that bid. So no matter what, and we're dealing with all regional school districts, all school districts in general, are dealing with transportation costs that are very high at this time, no matter what. So we are still in a situation where we do our best to consolidate. We've actually had buses that hold more than 72 students, because we have some runs that go well above that. So we've done our best to try to accommodate and keep the number down, because each bus is between $45,000 and $50,000.
So that 50 buses a day, that's regardless of how many runs they make?
Right, right.
Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article Seven, to see if the town will vote to raise such sums of money as may defray the expenses of the Wachusett Regional School District Operation Assessment for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, and to determine whether the town will appropriate money therefore to be provided by taxation or by appropriation from available funds or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,472,920 to defray the expenses of the Wachusett Regional School District Operations Assessment for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018.
Motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends unfavorable action on this article. And I'd like to propose an amendment. Mr. Moderator, I move to amend the motion by reducing the amount to be raised and appropriated by the sum of $133,404.16, so that sum total of $3,339,515.84 shall be raised and appropriated to defray the expenses of the Regio, Wachusett Regional School District Operations Assessment for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018.
Seconded. An amendment has been made and seconded. At this time, we'll work on the amendment alone. Is there any discussion on the amendment? This gentleman here is first, Mr. Knackily.
I did not hear the original motion get seconded, so I don't believe that amendment was in order. By whom?
Thomas Rochauller.
Okay, just wanted to know who's seconded.
You should state your name when you come to the mic, too, please.
I will.
Are you speaking on the amendment?
Sure. Ed Novak, 31, Marjorie Lane. I'm also a representative on the Wachusett Regional School District from the town of Rutland, and have also served in the Business and Finance Subcommittee for the past three years. I'm disappointed that we're proposing an amendment to reduce the number set forth by this full school committee without having the town having had a chance to vote on it previously. I'd like to see the town body get a chance to vote on this motion. If that fails, then it could be reconsidered and amended downward.
Sorry about that, I forgot that. My name's Matthew Lavoy. I'm a resident of Rutland. I'm also a member of the Wachusett Regional School District School Committee. And I just want to make a couple of statements here, and I'm going to encourage the attendees here at town meeting and my fellow Rutland residents to not support this amendment. And there's one reason why I'm going to ask you not to support this. Under Massachusetts Regulation 603 CMR 41.052A, the budget as adopted by the Regional School Committee shall be placed before each local appropriating authority for its consideration. Town meeting, represented by all the voters here, is that authority. This town has elected four members to the Regional School District Committee to develop this budget. Those members worked with a 22-member committee to furnish a budget that was developed and brought to each of the five towns. I believe it is worth your tax dollars to vote on that budget. It is not on the finance committee, it's not on the Board of Selectmen, and it's not on the school committee to make the determination of a budget. It is the people here at the town. Mass state regulations provide every attendee that authority to decide if that budget warrants a yes or no vote. If you pass an amended budget, you are essentially voting no on the school committee budget without ever having the ability to vote on it. If the attendees here decide to vote no on this amended number, you will then be granted the authority to vote on the proposed budget. So I'm going to ask the attendees not to support this amendment, provide everyone here the opportunity to exercise your right and vote on the budget that was agreed to and proposed. The other detrimental effect to supporting this amendment is that would fail this budget, which could require the school committee to go back to deliberations and make cuts to the services of the schools. That is something that should be done by the school committee should the proposed budget fail, not if an amended budget passes. Thank you very much.
Daryl McCall, 29 Emerald Road, Superintendent, Wachusett Regional. Mr. Moderator, if you don't mind, I just want to speak to the budget a little bit. Again, I've been a Rutland resident now for 19 years. Both of my student, both of my children went through the schools here, and I've been superintendent now for five years and have worked in the district for 19 years. One of the things that we do as a school district when we pull a budget together is work with the teachers, the principals, the school improvement councils, the school committee, just around on creating a budget that is ultimately sustainable and will provide a solid education for the students in our school district, in Rutland and the four other towns. We have over 7,000 students in this school district, and as I said a little earlier, we're the largest regional school district in the state. So step by step, we've set to, we set up a district strategic plan that we focus our budget on, and we have, you know, each line ties back to our strategic plan. When we're looking at what we're spending in terms of support for the students, we're really specific about tying it back to one of the five domains around our plan. You know, in reference to this current budget, one of the things that I pretty much hear on a constant basis is the fact that we have disparate schools. There's some parity issues between our schools from town to town. So for example, Holden has Mountview Middle School, brand new, $37 million building, fantastic technology, lots of science and math equipment and so forth. And Rutland has Central Tree Middle School, and I was there a year after it opened as the assistant principal, but it's 20 years old now. And the materials, the technology, it's not at the same level. So one of the things that we did with this budget was really try to provide some parity for what Rutland is going to receive. So for the FY '19 budget, we're looking at having a halftime middle school counselor added to the budget. Currently, Central Tree has 400 students and one halftime counselor. The recommendation for counseling, like a ratio of counselor to students is actually 1 to 250. So even if by adding a half a counselor right now to help with social emotional needs associated with our kids, we're still way over the ratio. We're also looking at increasing our budget for our science materials here at Glenwood for our fourth and fifth graders, as well as our middle school. Again, we have new science standards. We've not updated our materials in many, many years. We have PE materials that we're also updating to align with our curriculum. And then, you know, one of the biggest expenditures that we're making is literacy program. So we started in kindergarten this year, and we're moving to grade one for FY '19. And that's really around providing consistency from building to building, town to town, around literacy, learning to read. And it's something that we haven't had. But again, when we start looking at parity and equity, that's one of the ways that we do it. And finally, when we're talking about the staff, we really want to put some more money into our professional development for our teachers and also put technology into their hands as well as the kids' hands. So we're actually going to be getting Chromebooks for the middle school teachers this year. And then for Glenwood Elementary, the teachers will be getting Chromebooks as well. And a Chromebook is like a laptop, but a lot less expensive and just as powerful ultimately. But, you know, again, we've been very fortunate. Our freshmen at the high school, all of, you know, five, 20 of them ended up getting a Chromebook this year, and it's worked out fantastically for them. They've really enjoyed them, the teachers have enjoyed them, and it's really brought us into the 21st century. It's 16, 17 years late, but, you know, we're here. So we hope to continue to move forward with that next year. And again, at the high school, we're also adding an adjustment counselor and an integration specialist. That tech integration specialist will be vital in terms of providing support for those students around technology. You know, the other part of it is that there were lots of items on this budget that we didn't include. You know, we're one of the only school districts in the entire Commonwealth that doesn't have free full-day kindergarten. I mean, there are a handful, literally a handful of districts that don't have free full-day K. You know, we also don't have librarians in any of our schools with the exception of the high school. And one librarian for 13 schools just doesn't make a lot of sense. And I bet you there are many parents or community members who have actually volunteered at Glenwood or Naqwaq or Central Tree to help out in our library over the past several years. We appreciate that, but it shouldn't be like that. Ultimately, we also don't have elementary counselors. We know counseling support for our elementary students. At this stage of the game, in terms of where we are as a country, you know, we really need to provide support for kids from the time they walk into schools in kindergarten all the way through 12th grade. And right now, our 12th, you know, our high school looks pretty good. We're starting to increase our middle school support, but at the elementary level, it's just not there. And finally, when we're talking about instructional support, technology, textbooks, the average age of our textbooks is over 14 years old. That's a, that's an old book. You know, my deputy superintendent, I had tasked him to put together a textbook plan. It was originally supposed to be five years. We have so many needs, he had to roll that out over nine years. So nine years is a long time to have a textbook plan. And ultimately, by the time we kind of roll through, think about it, a student that's in second or third grade, they're going to be gone by the time we kind of have made our way through this. So, you know, ultimately, we feel as though this is a budget that puts us in a better place. It's productive in terms of what we're going to do around teacher support, around professional development, around technology, and we appreciate the support that the town of Rutland and the other towns have given us.
Hi, Sherry McNamara, 3 Williams Circle. I just want to echo Dr. McCall's wonderful kind of overall summary of what the budget could do for our kids. Not only am I a resident here in Rutland, I work at Glenwood. I'm a speech pathologist here. I get to see the kids in the classroom every day and the challenges that our teachers are faced with, with large class sizes, a lot of emotional, social needs, that guidance counselors would make a huge impact for what the problems that they're facing. And I just want to encourage the town to think about that Rutland has not voted for the full budget in over 10 years, and I would really like you to consider voting no on the amendment and voting, letting the whole town vote on the entire budget proposed by the school committee. I just want to also let you know that if you vote for the lower number, it's about $130,000 reduction for the entire district. And so about a half a million dollars that it would be reduced, and that's a lot of money that all of our students will lose out on. My question is, do we have a number that the townspeople, the taxpayers, would be paying if we voted on the entire budget? How much that would be per household or like on $300,000 per household or of the house, what do you call it, the assessment of the house cost or mortgage? I don't know how to say that.
The town, the town is trying to stay within its, within its allowable two and a half percent levy increase and use additional one-time cash reserves and apply state aid and local receipts. So it would be, there would be no extraordinary increase in taxes. You're not going to go up the two and a half percent plus additional revenues.
Nancy Nichols, 5 Lizzie Lane. Dr. McCall, I appreciate what you said, because I agree with you. I watch your strategic plan. I have a request, because I know you work with the staff, with the school committee members. Considering we have four school committee members, we may not be able to do it this year, but next year and years forward, can maybe we work on strategic plans with the finance boards? Because although there may be four, like I said, school committee members, they don't attend the finance committee meetings. And at least that way, you know, it's true, these kids need things, kids do need education. And you know what? The numbers are going to go up higher. I'm one of the people that's working along with the police chief and Carrie Remington from the library on this opioid crisis. You're going to be looking at a lot more as far as special education, social workers in school. So why not look at the whole child and what they need, police, fire? Because it's all going to increase. Instead of having this same conversation every single year, let's work together to come up with a number that suits every, that suits the child and their entire family. Because you know what? Those, those children that are in school, mine, yours, families take advantage of the food banks. They need police and fire. DPW clears, you know, the way to go to school and everything else. So it's the same redundant conversation. Let's work together, but let's, in addition to the people you meet with, let's meet with the finance boards. Okay?
Karen Norwald, 149 Palmagussett Road. I sit on the finance committee, but I'm speaking as a citizen. I have been sitting on the board for six years. Every year, I ask the same exact question of Daryl McCall and Joe Scanlon. I was told this year, there is no such thing as a line-by-line budget for the Wachusett Regional School District. I was told they do it with assumptions. I was told they do it with assumptions. Every one of my departments in this town gives me a line-by-line budget and lets me know where the money is being spent. I'm sorry, but I don't think it's acceptable that a school committee and a school department superintendent can come to the finance committee and the town and say, "This is what it's going to be," and take our word for it. I just want to let you know that as part of going through all these budget hearings, we sit in budget hearings from January through tonight, and we sat through a bunch of meetings. All I can say is that we're not giving COLIS to our employees. We have several very important employees within the town. They're giving up their contractual raises to help get us to a balanced budget. We can't afford the full amount. Look at your handouts. There is a contingent budget. This will really hurt the town. We are telling you what the town can afford. We have worked. The school, the school department is fully aware. Margaret attends and explains to the school district what we can afford, where our new budgets are, where our new growth is, everything. So we are more than transparent with the school district. They are fully aware this will hurt the town. I heard the hot button of textbooks. I just want everyone to know, and Dr. McCall, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but I believe last year when cuts needed to be made, textbooks were the first things to go. I just want to make sure everyone also understands that we have no non-union wage adjustments in the budgets. We need to have these kinds of things. If the school budget, that's, our town employees are losing out, and that's for all of us, regardless of whether we have children or not. I again implore the school district to give us a line-by-line budget so that we can all sit down and go through it. But what we get handed is a book, and we're told to take our word for it. Thank you.
Lou Carnicule again, 18 Blueberry Lane. The reason I asked a question on Article 3 was, is this the budget? My voice is loud enough. Can you hear me without that foolish mic? I asked a question, why are we accepting the budget that the school committee presented to us? And I was told yes. Then two items later, I find this. I've been coming to town meetings for 44 years. I think I missed one. I was sick one year. This is not the first time that this kind of article or this approach has taken place. About 30 years ago, we had a pronouncement made because there was a difference between what the administration of the school wanted and what the town wanted to give. And we were told that the school committee, if you were going to up the budget, you had to show us where in the budget, in the overall budget, you can make reductions on the municipal side in order to fund the school budget. We shot that down 3 to 1. Even people who were up there waiting to vote against the school budget wouldn't allow that kind of backdoor baloney. If you read the rest of this amendment, what it says in there is, it's going to then handicap the municipal side. They can't move money if they want to fund the school budget. This is a backdoor move. This is the worst move I've seen in 44 years. And with all due respect to the member of the finance committee, and I watched finance committees for 44 years. Nine years I was a selectman, and I worked hand-in-hand with the finance committee. I know how hard they were. But this, we're going to lose these people. We're going to have layoffs. This one's going to be hurt. 44 years. Somebody please tell me what anybody got laid off in this town. No one's ever been laid off in this town. We put in full-time fire. We have full-time ambulance services. We have full-time this, full-time that. This town is on the move, but we can't be crippling the school all the time. Too many kids are being hurt. You can always buy another ambulance a year later. You can't repeat the 5th grade. You can't do it. You can't bring the books in then. Please, vote this amendment down.
Michael Pratt, 13 Carlson's Way. I got a couple of problems with this. Number one, you're not, you're taking away our right to vote for the amendment that's here. I don't think you have that privilege to take away our right for democracy. So we deserve the opportunity to vote. Number two, you came up here and spoke as a resident? No. The message that you gave was a member of the finance committee with your opinions, using your power to use that. I disagree with what you said and how you said it. So I don't think what you brought up here was a resident. You came up as a town. And let me finish this. And by the way, when you click your fingers so quickly because textbooks got dropped, go into a classroom and see the size of the students and the number of students that are in that classroom. So as quickly as you can snap your fingers, walk into a classroom. And yes, I am an assistant principal at the high school. I see it every single day, what these kids have to go through and what gets cut. And by you cutting the budget without letting us vote for it first, it's ridiculous, it's undermining, and you're taking away our right for a vote.
Mr. Moderator, through you. I do want to clarify that under state law, the budget that's been presented was presented appropriately, and a motion can be made to reduce the amount that the school committee is requesting. The fact that it's made it as an amendment, that's a policy decision for this body to make a decision on. The full amount of the budget is before you. If you vote down the amendment, you'll vote on the budget as it was presented by the school committee. Whether to do that is a decision for this body, but it is appropriate and legal that the amendment was made.
Margaret, do you want to talk about?
I would just like to speak to revenues very briefly. First of all, I do think what this school district, the school committee came up with is fair. In fact, it's, the bottom line was actually less of a percent increase than we've seen in recent years because we had a drop in the MLC. But I do want to talk a little bit about revenues. This is not a school versus town. I just want to talk about where revenues are generated and how they're applied. The town of Rutland generates revenues in three ways. One, through taxation. The tax levy represents a little over 75% of all the revenues that go to every one of our town services, including education, public safety, public works, and all other town departments. The next highest contributor to our local receipts or our revenue generation is state aid and local receipts. That represents about 24%. I want to talk just a bit about state aid in just a moment. And then the final piece is the use of one-time cash reserves. I think most people here know through prior town meetings and seeing handouts that one-time cash reserves, free cash, stabilization, remaining balances in capital funds, et cetera, should be used prudently. They're called one-time cash reserves because they're not considered a recurring funding source for recurring expenses. So those are the town's three sources of revenues. The school district's three sources of revenues are state aid, town assessments, and local receipts, the school district's receipts. I think those are the three primary sources. Correct me if I'm wrong. Now, to state aid, generally, when we get to town meeting, and this year is no different, the state is working through its budget process. And I'm going to be perfectly blunt. This happens to be a state election year, and we have seen things moving in the state house that we haven't seen in the recent few years. The House Ways and Means budget has adopted a budget proposal that would increase the district's funding over $350,000, which to Rutland is almost $80,000. Now, the Senate Ways and Means budget just came out the other day, just came out the other day, and would reduce Rutland's share by only about $10,000. Make no mistake, 70 or $80,000 is a big number to Rutland. You see the contingent reductions here. Yes, layoffs have been rare, if there have been any layoffs in the past, and I can explain that as well. That happens to, that happens to tie right into the fact that we are self-appropriating for our unemployment benefits. We frankly cannot afford to lay someone off. We have, we have had people collect unemployment, and we have used our reserves. However, we have a number of non-union municipal employees who have not received equitable pay adjustments, and there is a correction, a wage correction, in this recommended budget for some employees whose wages have fallen 20% below minimum and minimum mean and medians among several comparable towns. So I just want, I just want to try to clarify the revenue picture as far as the district goes. With the state aid and the local assessments, through no fault of the district, with declining state aid, the town, this district has had to rely more heavily on its member towns to contribute local assessments. All I would ask is that you consider the movement in the state house and that the district and the town could both be made whole this year by the movement in the state budget. Thank you.
Joe Becker, 18 Crestview Drive. This is kind of an unfortunate circumstance, and a town like Rutland finds itself in it pretty much every budget year. And this, I would echo the sentiments of people who have said, "This is not a town versus school thing." This is, you know, trying to allocate a limited amount of resources, and it's always a challenge. And to that point, and I thank the town administrator for some of what she just said, but to that point, there's a very clear, concise number here of $133,404.16 that we're having a discussion about in essence. So my question is, is obviously that number was derived at for a reason. My question is, what exactly does that number represent? Because we're not, you know, we're not talking about necessarily cutting a school budget. My sense is, we're also having a conversation here about what we can maintain on a municipal side of the budget. So what is, what does this $133,000 represent? I know you had said it. In part, it has to do with some equitable COLAR, cost of living increases for non-union employees, but my guess is it also involves other things as well.
Okay, everyone should have a sheet, a handout called FY19 Contingent Budget Reductions. The total is $84,293.12. So Joe's absolutely right. It's not, it's not just wage corrections that have to be made for several non-union employees. The fire department, they would see reductions in their budget by about $20,000, and the Department of Works, Department of Public Works, I'm sorry, over $10,000. These are, in those two departments in particular, there are operational costs involved, and those two departments could certainly speak to themselves, speak for themselves if they're recognized by the moderator. But both departments have struggled with the maintenance of their equipment, with their work on the roadways, with supplies for their vehicles, and these were amounts that were requested by those two departments to help fund those needs. So it's not just, it's not just wage corrections, to answer your question. It's also operational costs, and I've tried my best to lay out what those reductions would be and what they mean on your contingent reduction sheets.
On this issue. But I have a lot of respect for our town administrator, but she's wrong or she's misleading in some areas. Very, very misleading. I mean, I served for nine years on the Board of Selectmen. There are other former selectmen here. We all went through these budgetary problems. But the town continued to move forward. And so if they're going to reduce $10,000 at the DPW, I'm sure he's going to have the same amount of people working there. And so they may have to maybe not buy a new plow blade for this particular year. But the reduction is felt stronger in the schools. You can't make that time up. You can't make that time up. And as far as wages are concerned, the nine years that I was a selectman, Doug and I served together with Jimmy and God rest his soul, we gave raises every year. We only had one unionized group in the town during the nine years I was there, and that was the police department, and they unionized partway through my time there. Yet we found money to give everybody a raise. So if you have been cutting the school budget the last two years, how did these non, these non-union workers not get a raise? You were saving money with the school budget being slashed, and you weren't giving the raises? I find that hard to believe, I really do.
Matthew Lavoy, 28 Grizzly Drive. I just want to ask that this motion either be called because there is a specific question asked about the amendment as to what that money accounted for, and the person who raised the amendment should be answering that question, not the town administrator? If we're following parliamentary procedure where an amendment is made on this floor and a question is made about the amendment, the person who raised the amendment should be answering, not a town administrator.
Hi. So I, I'm hoping I can address some of the questions that have come up. It was my goal in life to not have town meeting go this way this year. We are so close, and to Joe Becker's point, we're talking about $133,000. And the reason we're talking about that small amount of money is that there were significant cuts made on the municipal side to try to get us as close as we could and to minimize that delta and still protect the services we know we need and give the school as much as we could. And the reason I'm frustrated that we continue to be here is that there is no reason to be fighting, you know, the bleachers against the floor kind of a thing. The issue we have had and that we have had for years, and it's outlined in Auditor Bump's report, is that the state has not met its funding obligations, not for minimum local, not for regional transportation. We talk about this all the time. And the reason people keep bringing this up tonight is because we're seeing movement this year. There are people who are acting, who are making calls, who are sending emails, and we are seeing movement. The budget has moved from the governor's desk to, through the House. It is now with the Senate. We have seen movement at the transportation number for regional transportation. We have seen movement as well with the regional school foundation study, and I'm going to come back to that because that's important. And I want to ask everybody who's here tonight, did you have a chance, and I know you had a lot of documents out there, but did you have a chance to actually read the school budget yet? Did you go through it line by line? Did you read the budget book that was online when you look at expenditures? Did you read the town budget? Do you know how close we are when we're talking about where these numbers are going? The reason I bring that up is because, like Margaret said, you do have a list of the contingent reductions on the town side. So if we pass the full school budget tonight, which is still a possibility, you're going to then start voting on the contingent reductions and all of the little things that Louis is referencing. I don't think they're all so little. I would actually really question the ambulance. I don't think any of us, parent or non-parent, takes a shot and takes a chance with not having a working ambulance. So I, but you know what? But that's separate.
That's your interpretation of what I said. Come on.
But, but that said, it's separate. We are voting on an ambulance on Monday as a dead exclusion. If you look on the school side and you think to yourself, "I don't, I don't want to pass a reduced school budget," I get it. I do think there is a little bit of movement in the school budget. The budget was approved and passed without any reductions. It was not reconsidered at any time. Admin is up 7.43%, $145,000. That's not for any principals, that's just admin. Custodial supplies, they're up 40%, $46,000. Electricity, it's up 10.29%, $97,000. And I'm not bringing those up because I don't think the school needs them. I'm going to bring them up because I think they might be able to be cut a little. It's not perfect. It's not ideal for anybody, but it's the same as our contingent reductions. There might be movement there. Now, all that said, I have to say, I'm supporting this amendment tonight because I don't think they're going to have to make these reductions. Now, there is not one of us that can sit here and guarantee that. And I know certainly online, there's been movement with the IM Wachusett Group, with "Support Our Regional Schools," to tell you how to vote based on the fact that we can't say for sure what the ultimate state budget will be. That's true. We don't. And part of what makes this hard tonight is that yet again, we're giving you kind of a complication, like, why can we just not make this easy? Why can't we just vote municipal budget, the school budget, call it a day? Well, I wish we could. We came really close, and here's where we are. We're really close. If we vote this amendment, give it a shot. If we vote the amendment, we, yes, have technically failed this budget. That's a big pill to swallow. But we have given the school committee a number to work with. They take that number, they wait for Monday. If Paxton passes their override, most likely, the school gets its budget. It's unlikely that Holden would fail it. It's unlikely that Princeton will fail it. Sterling has already passed it. Whatever we did here tonight didn't matter. The school district will have gotten its number if Paxton fails their override, fails the budget, but the school committee has Rutland's number to jump off. number to jump off of, at that point, they can wait as long as they want. Well, actually, no, they have 30 days to respond, I think, 30 days to set a meeting. To decide whether to accept the number we provided them, to make semi-cuts and send it back with something slightly different, or to wait and see if they are made whole by the state. It is looking really good that they're going to be made whole by the state. They actually sent a letter to us indicating the numbers that were coming out already when the House budget got changed. Now, this budget is going up and down. If you're following it, transportation was up a million, then it was up 2 million, now it's only up a million. We have an email from Ann Goby's office that she'll be filing an amendment on Monday to make it go up again significantly. I think it's a good shot. And what I want to get back to yet again is why we shouldn't have to fight with each other tonight, because this really is a state issue. And if we can walk away from here tonight, having passed the amended budget, what it sort of means, at least to me, is that nobody's thrilled, nobody. But nobody's off in a corner crying. This town will have been able to maintain what it needed to maintain. Some of those things are really important. We need, if you looked at it, a planner. When we look at why some of the situations we're in, why we're here, it's because we don't have a professional planner in this community of this size. It's not ideal, but it's hopefully going to put us in a state where we walk out of here tonight and everybody got close to what they wanted. Close. Not ideal, but close. I hope you will consider the amendment. I think the ideal situation is that the school budget will be made whole at the state level instead of by the town. It should have been like that for a long time. Maybe we're moving in the right direction finally.
I'd like to address some of Mr. Canacchioli's concerns. I know some of you in the audience here did attend the budget forum. Most of you did not. Louis, you were not there.
I was in Florida.
I understand that. I know that. I wish I could afford to go to Florida.
Don't insult me.
I'm not insulting you.
You're making me look bad by saying that.
No.
You know I was in Florida. Apologize for that.
No, sir. Alls I'm saying is you weren't in attendance.
Because I was in Florida. Tell the audience that.
I am not here to jump up and down and...
So everybody knows Mr. Canacchioli was in Florida.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, for telling the truth. That's why I wasn't there.
I don't lie.
Okay, okay. Stay on focus.
No, I'm sorry. I'm not going to stand up here and yell and scream because I think we're more adults than that. Mr. Canacchioli says, so what if we don't have a plow blade? So what if we don't have a plow blade? If I can't go out and plow the roads, if the fire department can't respond to a fire because they can't get equipment, if the police department can't respond to emergency because they don't have fuel for their car, who's going to get the call? The school department? No, we are. If I can't open the schools, which I get, and I've had a very good relationship with Dr. McCall, very good relationship with Joe, we get the phone calls and the snowstorms at 3:00 in the morning, and I'm very proud to say, and I think you can support me here, that Rutland is probably the only town that is ready to open for schools. So if we can't plow the roads, who's going to, who's going to pay the price? The school district. We can't fix the roads because, as I said at the budget forum, I hoard money all year long. Finance knows this. I have $9,000 in gravel that I saved for construction season. Guess where it went? To the budget shortfall. So I can't buy gravel. The only aid I get for road repair is from Chapter 90. It's the only way we can do it. We can't repair roads. Margaret's point, all of her non-union personnel, and one you stated, Louis, when you were a selectman, you only had one union. Do you really want more unions? Because that's what you're looking at. You're looking at police, fire, which have unions, DPW employees have unions, and now you're going to have a union for the OAD, or the support staff, which is more important to me than anybody around here. Because they, they're the ones, they're the backbone of the operation. How many times have I said that? I got to tell you, I fight for the department. I fight for the town. It's our job to take care of, maintain the town. It's police and fire's job to respond to emergencies, and they get it done and so do we. We do the best we can with what we've got, and we will continue, and I thank all you guys.
Our police like to speak on how it would affect either one of you if the budget passes as asked. Nick or Seth, both of you are the two people I'm speaking to if you'd like to. If not, then that's fine. Both of you are good. You had an opportunity to speak. Thank you, men.
Matt Earnworth, 10 Carley Circle. I have a couple of points and a couple of questions. My first point, there's a lot of conversation going on and people saying, this can't be done and we don't have this money. For people that are missing this, we're talking about $133,000 to Rutland. That's not $133,000 to the school budget. That's over half a million dollars to the school budget. We represent 23.23% of the school budget, and if we cut that amount, the other 77% of the school budget also has to get cut by the same allocated amount. So we're going to lose for our schools, someone did mention it, but I just want to make sure that it's clear, we're going to lose over half a million dollars for the school budget. This isn't talking about a few thousand dollars. The other point I'd like to make, our town administrator was very honest and said, wow, in an actual assessment of our taxes, the difference that we're looking at wouldn't be that significant for each property owner. I'm trying to understand, and I would love to know why, we're about to vote on, later on, about ambulance and a police cruiser, which are contingent upon an actual vote that goes to the town and we vote on the 2.5 override for certain exclusions, which, by the way, I am going to vote yes for because I support our town services, I support our towns. I don't understand, we're being told there's no way we could ever support our schools without getting rid of firefighters and getting rid of all of our town services. That's not true. I'm happy to pay a couple of dollars more in my taxes for however long to make sure that the kids in this community get the education that they're supposed to get and that they deserve. So, and again, as Lou mentioned, this is like a lot of talk to push the issue aside. This amendment is stopping us from voting on the actual budget. At the very least, let the people vote on the actual budget. Vote down the amendment and then vote on the budget. If you don't like the budget, vote no on the budget. But don't take the washover to just, oh, this is what we want, this is what we need. No. The schools need money. Our kids need an education. Vote no on the amendment because it's going to cut over half a million dollars to the schools, and then decide whether you want to vote yes or no on the actual school budget.
I just want to clarify something on the levy question, the impact on the tax rate. The reason that we would be staying in the 2.5, one of the reasons we'd be staying in the 2.5 is because there would be the municipal budget reductions to offset that increase. So it, yeah, you can't do, you can't do...
We're voting to go over the 2.5 for the ambulance and the cruiser, correct?
There's a dead, there are dead exclusion, dead exclusion questions on the capital equipment.
Matt, you bring up a good point, Matt, and I want to answer two parts to that. The first is you are suggesting...
I'm suggesting you're going to an override.
No, I, yeah, so I want to get to that. The first thing you suggested was, why would we not vote down the amendment and then get to the original school committee presented budget, and if you don't like it, vote it down? The reason I don't like that idea is that we're so close, and I hear you, we, our 133 translates to half a million, but we're so close that providing the district with a working number where they know what we need is actually a great framework. It's a, it's a, again, technical failure, and that's a hard pill to swallow, but it's giving them some direction and they know where we are. And by the way, if they then come back and pass our number, they've got a past budget. No more delays. So if we simply fail it, they will not have that because they will then have to come back and present another number. Does that make sense?
So we still vote the number that you presented?
I, okay. So, so then to get to your second point, and the reason, it's a valid question and I want to bring it up. This year, for the amount of money we needed, because again, we're so close, I personally, and I advocated strongly against it, and then the FinCom's not happy, didn't want to see an override for the schools. And I'll tell you why. Because it's not a big number and because we, as a town, have a really hard time passing overrides. When you go to the ballot on Monday and you see a dead exclusion for two trucks, for an ambulance and for a police car, and it's a dead exclusion and you know it's temporary, those pass. We'll get them, we'll set ourselves up that we can fund them later with other options, but it's clear and it helps. And here's where I'm headed, Matt. Hold on, stay there. You don't have to move yet. You might like what I'm going to say. No, listen, listen.
The dead exclusion, ambulance, I have to support. Not to do a dead exclusion here, I hate.
No. Again, hold on, here's my last point. The reason I didn't want to do it this year for this, I don't want to say minimal, nothing's minimal, but for this smaller amount is because I honestly think, and I think our numbers are bearing it out, especially when we, when we look and we hear the CMRPC on our growth that's coming up, we are going to see and need a massive correction to our budgets, possibly as soon as next year, both municipal and school side. And I mean massive. If you look at Dudley Charlton this year, Dudley Charlton on a $23 million school budget, 23 million, ours is nearing 100 million, each town passed a $1.5 million override this year. Shrewsbury, several years ago, they passed a $5 million general override. We need to do this once, we need to do it right. And this wasn't the year where, because you're right. And by the way, I've had this conversation with the superintendent, I've had it with multiple people in this room, I've had it with other selectmen from other communities, and we're all going to have to do a lot of work. It's not going to be something where people get to stick a sign up a week before saying, overrides are forever, oh, no, vote yes for the schools. This is going to be a long campaign. It's going to require, you know, I hate to say it, but to Karen's point, a lot of transparency from the district in showing our historicals and our projected, because you can't do it every year. Dudley Charlton will not be able to do another $1.5 million override each town next year. But they did it once, it's a correction budget. I think we're headed there. This just wasn't the year, which is why this year, I sit here and I think we're so close, this might be the right thing to do today.
127 Pleasant Dale. As far as the schools, probably everybody in this room has children. You certainly went to school, you have grandchildren. It takes a village. It does take the plow, and it does take everything that we're talking about tonight. So I just want to remind everybody that it's not just a teacher. That's a part of it. The second thing I want to say is, Margaret, I want to apologize to you on behalf of, hopefully, most of the people in the audience, for the way that you and everybody up there and the other 150 or so volunteers who spend a tremendous amount of time going to meetings and helping and planning and figuring, and I don't see all of you people at all those meetings. So you have no right to tell Margaret that she is wrong. She is amazing, and if you go to some meetings, you will see that.
Ed Novak, 31, Marjorie Lane. Also still serving as a representative on the Wachusett Regional School Committee from Town of Rutland. A couple of things to keep in mind. One thing is, is stated that the corrections coming down from the state could help with the school budget. The school committee could in the future reduce the assessments to the town when that money does come through with the approved state budget. So that's one thing to keep in mind. Second thing is, if Rutland fails the budget and Paxton fails the budget, then two towns have failed the budget, the district budget is failed, that means the district is then operating in a 1/12 budget. If the money comes through in the future, when we're operating at 1/12 budget, depending upon when that happens, we're not able to start pre-purging our textbooks, pre-hiring the new positions we're talking about, like the adjustment counselors, the technology integrations specialist, stuff like that, until we have an approved budget. That may be September, October, when that happens, and then you start that process of hiring those people versus hiring them over the summer and having them in place when the school year begins.
The question has been moved. Is it seconded? All those in favor of moving the question, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Question is now moved. So everyone understands, we're going to vote on the amendment first. Does the amendment need to be reread? Everybody understands what the amendment is? So we're going to vote on the amendment first and only the amendment first. Probably, we should probably count. Mr. Davis, will you count on this side? Mr. Briggs, will you? Mr. Stillings, would you count on this side for me? All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your cards and wait until you're counted by either Scotty or Jeff on this side, please. Please raise your card on the amendment in favor of... All those, all those opposed, please, same sign. Okay. It's defeated. We'll just get a number. Come here again, you know. Come here again. Give your text. 39, Mr. Martin. We're going to have to, we're going to have to count the next one probably. We're going to have to count the regular motion probably too. I would anticipate. This is going to go down. The amendment is defeated, 107 to 49. So at this time, we are going to vote on the motion as it was originally stated. Does everyone understand what that is?
What was the number? No, I meant like the vote.
49, yeses. 107, no's.
49, is that correct? There were like 35 on this side.
And there was 14 on this side, so 14 and 39 is...
Okay, I didn't see that side. Okay, thank you.
I went to Wachusett, so I should be okay here, folks. That's correct. It was a few years ago. So at this time, we are going to vote on the motion as it was originally stated. And everyone understands what we're voting on? All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Okay, folks, I'm going to be difficult. Put your hands down, please. I'd like to count, please, it's close enough, Mr. Davis and Mr. Stillings. All those in favor of the original motion, raise your cards to be counted, please. All those in favor of the original motion, raise your cards to be counted, please.
So the main motion is gonna be this column, the contingent reduced budget.
All those opposed, raise your cards to be counted, please. Folks, we're gonna move on to Article VIII. We're gonna move on to Article VIII at this time. Article VIII, to see if the town will vote to raise such sums of money as may be necessary to defray the expenses for the municipal departments for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, and to determine whether the town will appropriate money, therefore, to be provided by taxation or by appropriation from available funds, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $6,415,009 appropriated from free cash, the sum of $199,111.04, and transfer from the Holden Hospital Trust Fund, the sum of $19,590, for the sum total of $6,633,710.04, to defray the expenses of the municipal departments for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, as set forth in column titled FY Contingent Reduced Budget in the Town of Rutland, FY 2019 Town Meeting Budget Handout, the fourth column, from the right to the left.
Does this motion receive support? Motion made, seconded, recommendation of finance.
The Finance Committee recommends favorable on this reduced amount.
Is there any discussion?
9 Sycamore Drive, Rutland, Mass. I want to know what that will leave in the free cash, and also what it will leave in the hospital fund.
In, in, I'm sorry, what was your second question?
Hospital account.
Okay. If this, if this motion passes, there'll be a little over, little less than $51,000 remaining in free cash to generate to next year's free cash, keeping in mind that we're applying $199,000 in free cash for this budget. And the remainder in the hospital health fund, that, that cleans out the hospital health fund for this year. We need to have a balanced budget by the end of this fiscal year, so we are going to have to find a way to balance the budget before this, this town meeting dissolves.
Is there any other discussion? Is there? Oh.
I just wanna, I just wanna speak to...
It's on, it's on.
Okay, I just want to speak to, there was a question on debt exclusions earlier. The, legally, the town cannot borrow for operating costs, a public entity cannot borrow for operating costs, so thereby, you don't have a debt exclusion for operating expenditures. And I also want to tell all of the town's dedicated departments and employees that I absolutely stand with you, you do incredible work, and thank you for your service.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Hearing on, all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Kelly Buzell, 14, Irish Lane. I'd like to make a motion to revisit the question on the school budget, because if we don't...
And everybody leaves, they can bring it back up and re-vote it. We want to revisit the school budget to vote yes again, or to vote your way again, because otherwise, according to Robert's rules, everybody could leave. Reconsider the question. I do this every year, but... I'll take the heat off.
So what's the, the motion, the motion's in place, it's not gonna happen. Then we go back to exactly where we were before we voted. No, just before we voted on the actual...
So we have to vote on the...
No, we went, that's, that's not before...
All right, so she has made a motion to reconsider Article VII, correct?
Is that the right article?
Yes.
Yes.
The one we just took a lot of counts on. So, in turn, your motion needs a second.
Seconded.
A motion is made and seconded, and in turn, all those in favor, is there any discussion? Is...
Yes.
We're, we're only discussing to reconsider.
The opportunity to reconsider.
That is correct. So do you want to talk on that?
So for those in the audience, a motion was just made to reconsider, and it would have to be made by somebody who voted affirmative, meaning they voted yes for the full budget. And the reason why they're asking for that motion, and they're asking that everyone here votes no to reconsider, because regardless of what people say here, we're governed by Robert's rules of order, and if we vote down this motion to reconsider, nobody else who voted yes, and Member Deb voted yes on the budget, but she said she was gonna vote no on, she was, she was for the amendment, so she could make a motion to reconsider, we could all leave, and then they could vote the budget down. So what you want to do is vote no for this motion to reconsider, and that it's tabled, and we don't have to worry about it, people can leave and go home.
The point is, maybe you should all stay. Yes. Yes. You should all stay.
Just to, just to clarify, the gentleman that was just here, we are not governed by the Robert's rules of order. Town Council, please answer that. You seem to have an awful lot of answers tonight, tonight.
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, the town uses town meeting time and not Robert's rules.
Rock. Mr. Moderator.
Point of order, who's paid by the town to, to guide us?
This young lady here.
Thank you. I, Joe Becker, 18, 12. You know, I, I find it disappointing that there's, there's a movement made here so everyone can leave. The conversation that we just had, you know, it's very sad. We have one shot in every fiscal year to vote on a budget. That budget, fire extends the scope of just the school. It also extends to DPW. It extends to fire. It extends to police, ambulance, dispatch, building, everything. So for anyone who voted in the affirmative that just wants to jet out of here because you got your vote, is extremely disappointing to me as a resident, as a former selectman, as a citizen, as a taxpayer, as a voter, because these departments work hard to give this town the standard of living that we have, and we enjoy, and we just want to bolt and not have a say on what their budget gets appropriated to them? That's sad, people.
I hate to say this to a group of adults, but you know what? We're putting money into the schools, let's teach the kids not to act like this. This is ridiculous. I mean, this is really ridiculous. And the other thing I have to say, regardless of what side you're on, I believe that Dr. McCall and Margaret are on the same level playing field here. They both do a great job, one running the school district, one running the town. How dare anybody in this room put either of them down? I don't care if you like the numbers or not. But you know what, it's disgusting, and if you want to leave, go ahead, but don't come back next year, because we don't need you here, if that's how you care. Your kids need everything. And I will tell you, for, all it would take is one time. You ask a 16-year-old child, which by the way, I think the high school students, although they're disrespectful, and I have to point you out, Mr. Pratt, because I'm really disappointed on how unprofessional, you, you yelled at all these people, and I know you're emotional, but then you went back and laughed. Okay? No wonder the high school kids don't have respect, although I think they could handle it better than this room. I think they could probably get decisions and, and work together for a number, because your kids not only need education, they need that ambulance. You ask any 16-year-old, especially when they, you know, go through a loss of a parent, which they have, loss of a grandchild, a sibling, anybody else, you ask them if they'd rather be sitting in a room full of toy, 30 students, or rather be sitting in a room full of 15, but knowing that the ambulance never made it to save their family member. So you know what? Let's just stop and vote on what's at hand, and stop the arguing, it's ridiculous.
I'd like to speak, but I'm afraid of Mr. Knackioli, so I'd like to have the moderator move Mr. Knackioli to the end of the row, because he's up here chirping at everybody that comes up here. And that's, move to the end of the row, if you're all in favor of town government, move to the end of the row. Louie, you were, you were one of my teachers 40 years ago. Move to the end of the row, because I feel threatened, I'm afraid.
Hey, hey. Through me, both of you, please.
You know you love me, Darren.
Mr. Knackioli.
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Knackioli, you need to, everything's gotta come through me, please. Please.
I'd just like to say my thing.
Is it in regards to the motion that's on the floor?
It's on the motion. Saying that I'm being, well, brought up. I don't think, I don't think anybody, we, we just went over the municipal budget, we just passed that, I believe. I didn't see one person leave this place. There are 33, there are 33, there are 33, I didn't see anybody. I, don't intimidate me, Darren, please. And if the truth be told, Darren loves me, I'm one of his favorite teachers he ever had in school. Anyway, getting back, getting back to this, getting back to this, I, I can understand Joe's emotion, I really do. And I like Joe Becker, I've known him since he was a little kid, okay? He's a good guy. But no one's here gonna bail out of here, because we won, we won, we won. It, it is a, it is a, it is a strong political action that sometimes is necessary, there are 33 articles, if, if this gets to be one to 12 o'clock, which I've been here, to 11 o'clock, 11:30 meetings, and some people leave, and somebody brings it back up, it's, it's a sound political situation. No one is condemning and saying, you know, "We got ours, the heck with the rest of you." I'll be here till the end, because I have an article number 32. I hope you stay and support me on that one.
Is there any discussion on the... Motion to reconsider. Is there any other discussion? Does everybody understand if they vote yes or vote no?
If you motion this.
Town Council, will you please explain?
Mr. Moderator, if town meeting votes yes, that it wants to reconsider, then the article, as it was right before the vote, will be back before this meeting, meaning the Finance Committee main motion, which had the school committee requested number, will be back before town meeting for action. If the meeting votes no, it doesn't want to reconsider, we'll move on to the next article.
Does everyone understand that? All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those in favor of reconsidering, please raise your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion is defeated. Now we're gonna go back to Article II, that we had skipped earlier, as we said, after To see if the town will vote to fix the salaries or compensation of elected town offices for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, in accordance with Section 108, Chapter 41 of the General Laws, as amended, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to fix the salaries or compensation of elected town officials for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, in accordance with Chapter 41, Section 108 of the General Laws. Moderator, $75. Selectmen, $3,000. Town clerk, $61,756.80. Assessors, $1,500. Board of Health, $750. Planning Board, $2,500.
A motion is made and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Finance Committee recommends favorably on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there...
The amount for the town clerk, could you please restate that?
Yes, it's $61,756.80. The reduction is due to the passing of the school budget.
Okay, so that's just not what's here. Okay. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving back to Article IX, folks, back to Article IX, to see if the town will vote to raise such sums of money as be necessary to defray the expenses of the debt services for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, and to determine whether the town will appropriate money, therefore, to be provided by taxation or by appropriation from available funds, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,386,535.56. Transfer the sum of $3,485.87 from the Department of Public Works Garage Construction Account 371-429-596000, created under Article IX of the March 25, 2002 town meeting, and transfer the sum of $1,000 from the purchased land account 301-122-5960000, created under Article I of the June 30, 2003 town meeting, for the sum total of $2,391,2143, to defray the expenses of the debt service for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018.
A motion has been made and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, through you, can someone please tell me, we must be getting close to paying off some of these debts, for like the water services, we still owe money on that, and, and buildings like that. Can you tell us when we'll be eliminating some of those, which will be then freeing up money for us to use in our budget?
Treasurer and collector, could you answer that? It's, I believe she's looking. Our treasurer and collector has some paperwork in their hands, and she is coming. Mr. Knackioli, please don't heckle her, she controls our money.
I love her, I would never get rid of her. As presented at our budget hearing that we had last Monday, we did go over the debt as it, as a percentage of the annual budget. I think it is in 2020 that the middle school...
I think it is in 2020 that the middle school debt does, sorry, not the middle school debt, but the, I've got everything here. One of the school debts fall off the budget, well, is paid off. Our percentage of the annual budget in 2020 for general fund debt comes down to 5.51%. In 2021, it's 5.06%. So, and for this year, our total debt as a percentage of the general fund, the annual budget, is 8.37%. So it is going to, it is dropping.
To that point, I think that is a testament to the work of Dan, Becky, in refinancing our debt, and assuring that we abide by the town's overall financial policies.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 10, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money to operate the water department for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the following sums be appropriated from the Water Enterprise revenues to operate the Water Enterprise for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018. Salaries and wages, $262,560.84. Expenses, $185,929.1. Debt service principal, $75,000. Debt service interest, $33,125. And the sum of $114,340.63 be appropriated from the Water Enterprise revenues to the general fund for indirect expenses, and the sum of $66,457.35 be appropriated from the Water Enterprise revenues to the other post-employment benefit trust fund.
Motion is made and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on Article 10.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 11, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money to operate the sewer department for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town, that the following sums be appropriated from sewer enterprise revenues to operate the sewer enterprise for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018. Salaries and wages, $34,359.23. Expenses, $46,000. Treatment and transfer charges, $986,510.85. Debt service principal, $80,000. Debt service interest, $10,100. And that the sum of $45,412.20 be appropriated from the sewer enterprise revenues to the general fund for indirect expenses, and the sum of $13,113.53 be appropriated from the sewer enterprise revenues to the other post-employment benefits trust fund.
Does this motion receive support? Motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 12, to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money from the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund to fund PEG Access and Cable Related Operations for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, and further that at the close of the fiscal year, all unspent funds shall be closed back to the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $130,000 from the PEG Access and Cable Fund to fund PEG Access and Cable Related Operations for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, and to authorize the Cable Advisory Committee to expend such appropriation and to revert all unspent, all unspent funds at the close of the fiscal year back to the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund.
Does this motion receive support? Motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Finance Committee recommends favorably on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 13, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $516,743.71 in the fiscal year 2019 for the capital, equipment, building, facilities, and other products, as shown on a document entitled FY19 Capital Budget by Funding Sources, on file with the town clerk, and authorize the selectmen to take, by eminent domain, purchases or otherwise acquired, any fees, easement, and interest in land necessary, therefore, determine whether the funding shall be provided by the tax levy, by the transfer from available funds, by borrowing, or any combination of these methods, and further to authorize the board of selectmen to apply for, accept, expend any federal or state funds or private donations that may be available for such capital improvement, or take such other actions may be necessary to effectuate the vote taken hereunder, or take any action in relation thereto. You have a chart in front of you, I'm not going to read the chart.
Mr. Moderator, can I be allowed to ask just a question to town council about the language in the motion before I make the motion? Because the reason I'm asking the question is, everything is lumped into the same motion. Some of these things are going to require debt service, which requires a two-thirds vote, and other things don't require debt service, which doesn't require a two-thirds vote. So should they be split between two?
Mr. Moderator, they, there could be a motion to divide the question, to vote on these things separately, but they're not required to be voted separately.
I understand that.
It just, it pushes a two-thirds vote on everything.
If we don't get a two-thirds majority, all of it gets voted down, right? And some of it doesn't require debt.
Mr. Moderator, that's the way that it's drafted, as one motion, but certainly a motion can be made to divide the question.
So I guess if we have a unanimous vote, it doesn't much matter. My concern is if we don't obtain the two-thirds vote, we have a problem. So... I guess I'll take my chance. I just wanted to make the point, maybe next time, we don't want to put these things together.
Mr. Moderator, it would not be inappropriate in a case such as this, that if the main motion failed, that someone could get up and make a new motion to, and to divide the question, because there will be no main positive action taken, so a subsequent motion could be made.
Okay, all right. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $165,000 from free cash for public safety and library roof repairs. The sum of $46,700 from Water Enterprise free cash for the water filtration tank and media rehab. The sum of $308,710 to purchase and equip a new ambulance for the fire department, and a new cruiser for the police department, provided however that the appropriation shall be, this appropriation shall be expressly contingent upon the approval by the voters of the town of a Proposition 2 and 1/2, so-called debt exclusion question, in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 21, CK, and to authorize the board of selectmen to apply for, accept, and expend the sum of $40,000 from a state grant to purchase and equip a new command car 1 for the fire department, for the sum total of $560,410 for the FY19 capital budget, and to take such other action as may be necessary to effectuate the vote taken hereunder.
Mr. Moderator, we need this language that's not in bold to also be read, so in connection with the $308,710 to purchase and equip the new ambulance for the fire department, and the new cruiser for the police department, all of that language that follows, and as funding, therefore, to authorize the town treasurer, the board of selectmen, that all has to be part of the motion as well. As long as I can get it back. Thank you.
So picking up at the 308,000? Okay. Mr. Moderator, do you want me to reread the whole thing, or start at the 308? Okay.
Start at the 308, please.
And the sum of $308,710 to purchase and equip a new ambulance for the fire department, and a new cruiser for the police department, and as funding, therefore, to authorize the town treasurer, with the approval of the board of selectmen, to borrow said sum pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7 or 8, and any other enabling authority, and issue bonds and notes, therefore, in accordance with the General Law, Chapter 44, Section 20, authorize any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, to be applied to the payment of costs approved hereunder, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount authorized to be borrowed, to pay such costs, provided however that the appropriation of $308,710 shall be expressly contingent upon the approval by the voters of the town of a Proposition 2 and 1/2, so-called debt exclusion question, in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 21, CK, and to authorize the board of selectmen to apply for, accept, and expend the sum of $40,000 from a state grant to purchase and equip a new car 1 for the fire department, for the sum total of $560,410 for the FY19 capital budget, and to take such action as may be necessary to effectuate the vote taken hereunder. Wow, that's a mouthful.
A motion is made and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All those opposed, raise your cards again. So I should count then, even though it's... So I'm going to count, we do have some people that don't, just to clarify, please. All those in favor, please raise your cards again. Jeffrey and Scott, please do your thing. Well, it's not unanimous, I just want to clarify it. What's that? Yeah, but I got to count them both. Yeah, I forgot it, I forgot the motion was so long, I forgot it was two-thirds. Thank you. All those opposed, same sign, please. Jeffrey, do you have any? Motion, sorry about this, but it had to be two-thirds, and when it's not unanimous, I like to do a count to protect my rear end, in that, it's very obvious, and I do apologize, but it's 159, yes, four, no. Motion carries, two-thirds. Jeff? Mr. Davis had four. Four and 159 is about the number of people that are here, so. Moving on to Article 14, folks, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $24,500 from available funds, free cash for the purchase of seven complete set of firefighter turnout gear for the fire department, or take any action in relation thereto. I need a motion first. Can't second it.
All right. To see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $24,500 from available funds, free cash for the purchase of seven complete sets of fire firefighter turnout gear for the fire department, or take any action in relation thereto.
Does this motion receive support? Yes. Recommendation of the Finance?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? All those in favor, oh, sorry, I didn't see your hand. I apologize. If I don't see you, just holler at me, please.
Charlie O'Connor, nine, Sycamore. I just have a question. What is this doing to the free cash, as we're taking things from free cash?
Go ahead, Margaret.
There should have been a handout at the entrance called FY Certified Free Cash Use. So you'll see that with the use of free cash throughout the Articles for Special and Annual, you'll see the reductions, where again, the bottom line is going to be of, the remaining free cash balance to generate to next year is $50,888.96. I can't speak to the history.
The question was, have we ever been as low as $50,000 in free cash?
So our free cash guidelines and our financial policies do, do direct that $100,000, minimum $100,000, should remain in free cash at the end of the fiscal year to generate to the following year. I cannot answer whether it's been lower than this, but last year it was not.
My question is, if we don't pass the debt override and all of that stuff, and some of that money would have to come from free cash, if we only have 50, we won't be able to do like for salaries and other things with the, you know what I'm saying.
Margaret?
So free cash, this year, the current year's certified free cash goes away in, at the end of June, at the end of the fiscal year. At the early part of next fiscal year, before we have Fall Town Meeting, there'll be a new round of certified free cash for FY18, so it's whatever was generated in FY18. We'll have to look then to see how that free cash is going to be allocated. We just don't know what free cash is going to be certified at, at this point.
It just seemed like it was very low.
Is there other comments? Is there any other comments on this article? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 15, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $1,000 from available funds, free cash, as a grant to the Waukesha Greenways for maintenance and upkeep for its recreation paths, or take any action in relation thereto. If nobody has an objection, this young lady that's coming forward is the chairman, lady in charge of the Greenways, she's not a resident, does anybody have an objection if she speaks? No, she's going to make the motion. So...
Does making the motion mean reading this again, or no?
Just making your motion, please.
Okay, I make a motion, for the town to appropriate the sum of $1,000 from available funds as a grant to Waukesha Greenways for the maintenance and upkeep of its recreation paths, or take any action in relation thereto.
Does this motion receive support? Motion is made and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee votes unfavorably, or recommends unfavorable action on this article.
Is there any other discussion on this article? Would you like to? Would you like to... If there's no objection, can she make a comment? A brief comment?
My brief comment is, thank you to the town of Rutland for placing this article, and we are hopeful that you will decide to support $1,000, which is for maintenance and upkeep, which includes things like portable restrooms, maintenance, and so forth for the Mass. Central Rail Trail. And we believe that that is a wonderful investment, that there are eight communities that we're asking to come alongside many volunteers. It's a partnership effort, and it has included the Commonwealth. Many of these eight towns, including the town of Rutland, support over the last 20-plus years, as well as foundations, businesses, including Rutland businesses. But it's a small amount of money. It may not sound like much in this budget, but your support will mean a great deal to all of us who continue to work to make this facility available to our whole region.
Is there any other discussion on this article? Step aside, please, for a moment. This is a question that's directed to you.
Miranda Greenhout, 251 Pleasantale Road. I just want to urge the audience to seriously consider this motion. When my family moved here, the Rutland Rail Trail was a significant determiner in where we wanted to live and joining this community. My family uses it every day as a recreation path. My children learned how to bike there. It is a great asset to all of the athletes in town, and I think it's one of the stronger parts of our town, and I'm only happy to see that it's being extended into Oakham and through Holden. So it may be a minor point of what we've discussed here, but it means a lot to me, to my family, and I know it a lot to others in the community as well. So please, consider this one seriously.
Laurie Becker, 18 Crestview Drive. I just have a question where I feel like the rail trail is so well utilized by so many people in this town. Why would the finance committee recommend unfavorable on this?
Considering we're not looking at any cost of living increases and not being able to pay the wages of the employees in town sufficiently, we didn't feel it was appropriate to grant $1,000 outside of the community.
Is there...
I guess I'm getting my exercise. I don't need the rail trail. But that's not true. I do. I think it's a big asset to the town, and I think for the small amount that's being asked, this is for the children as much as the school. They are on it, they are using it, they are enjoying it.
Is there, is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? All those in favor of the article, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 16. To see if the town will vote to transfer from the sale of property of the Rutland Heights account 244-182-5960-000, the sum of $35,985.15, to fund engineering, site studies, marketing, legal, and other work required for the Rutland Development and Industrial Commission to prepare the Rutland Heights for the site disposition and development, including all incidental and related expenses, or take any action in relation thereto. Well, we're looking for...
Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article 16 as presented in the warrant.
Does this motion receive support?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the finance?
Mr. Moderator, we vote, the town vote favorably on this article.
Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 17. To see if the town will vote to transfer from the Naquadah Green Project Fund 360-300-5800, the sum of $11,525, to the fund the town proportion of the parking lot repair project at the Early Childhood Center in District Office with the budget, with the project budget of $50,000, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article 16 as printed in the warrant.
Does this motion receive support?
Second.
Seventeen. Does this motion receive support? Motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the finance, please.
Finance committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 18. That would come after seventeen. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $148,320 to the sum, to the fund of the town proportion of the cost of the 600,000 turf field replacement product at the Wachusett Regional School, provided however that the appropriation authorized hereunder shall be expressly contingent upon approval of the voters of the town of the proposition two and a half so-called capital expenditure exclusion question in ordinance with the provisions of MGL, Section 59, Section 21CI and a half and M, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article 16 as printed in the warrant.
Does this motion receive support? Seconded by Mr. Kanakioli. Recommendation of the finance?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article?
Laurie Becker, 18 Crestview Drive, speaking as a member of the Capital Improvement Plan Committee. This year, the Capital Planning Improvement Committee received 11 items for consideration in the capital plan, and as you noticed, this particular item was not among the ones in Article 13, which was part of our capital plan. And certainly, that wasn't because of lack of merit for the need of the field. The simple fact of the matter is, is there's limited resources that the Capital Planning Committee has in order to weigh up the various projects, and this particular project did fall below the line of recommendations we made for this fiscal year. That's not to say that in future fiscal years, we certainly wouldn't make it above the line. I just wanted to make the point that, you know, we still have two projects approved by the Capital Planning Committee that date back to fiscal year 2016 that have yet to be funded. So we struggle, you know, adding a new item that didn't make it, make this year's cut when we still have other items that have been approved by the Capital Planning and the priority process that have yet to be funded. So I just wanted to share that piece of information.
Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. We're gonna count, folks. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. I'm sorry, Jeff and Scotty, you're getting your count out tonight.
It's possible that Sheila's gonna want to reconsider before the end of the year. Margaret is basically... She wants to have some adjusted to cover her income.
Can she do that?
Well, she already has the motion, so yeah.
And that would have to be reconsidered?
No.
So...
Not really. And then, yes. So Sheila would like to have an explanation.
Yes.
Twenty-seven, Mr. Moderator.
Twenty-seven. All those opposed, same sign, please. Twenty-seven, fifty-four. Yeah. We're doing okay? We got a piece, so we keep this one. That's fine, huh? I get chills.
Twenty-three, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Why does it take him so much longer to count than you? That's why we count, folks. There was 81 yeses and 76 nos. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 19. Article 19, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of MGL, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 56, authorizing the Board of Assessors to grant real and personal property tax abatement up to 100% of the total tax assessed to the members of the Massachusetts National Guard and to the reservists or active duty in foreign countries for the fiscal year in which they perform such services. Subject to the ability criteria to establish by the Board of Assessors, the authorized to grant abatement under the vote shall expire after two years of acceptance unless extended by the vote of the town meeting or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article 20 as printed in the warrant.
Does this motion receive support? Mr. Panto, second. Recommendation of the finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Just clarification, Mr. Clark, it should be Article 19. He said 20, I believe. So, do you agree with me, Mr. Clark?
Article 19, yeah, I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Recommendation of the finance, I believe, was favorable. Sorry about that, just, is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 20. To see if the town will vote in ordinance with the provisions of MGL, Chapter 59, Section 4, Clause 41A, to increase the income, grocery receipts, therefore, for the eligibility of $20,000 to the maximum allowed income level for the circuit breaker, state income tax credit for certain elderly, single, non-head-of-household filers, and further to reduce the interest on deferred taxes from 8% to 5%, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion to Article 20 be submitted, as submitted.
Article 20 has been made. Seconded. Recommendation of the finance, please.
Finance committee recommends favorably on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 21. To see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to apply for, accept, and to expend any grant or donation from state or federal government, or private agencies, individuals, or institution, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move town vote to approve the article as printed in the warrant.
Is there a, is... Motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the finance?
Finance committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 22. To see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to enter into contract for the goods and services for the duration in the excess of three years under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30B, Section 12, Paragraph B, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the board of selectmen to enter in contracts for goods and services with a duration in the excess of three years and not longer than 10 years without town meeting approval. Under provision of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30B, Section 21, Paragraph D.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the finance?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Mr. Kanakioli, I'm sure you have a comment.
Well, just a question. If they'd like to comment...
No, no, that's fine. Just a question's great. Thank you.
Without coming to town meeting, what would be the limit on the amount of money you can get us involved with without us, the townspeople, the legislative body of this community, voting yes or no?
Mr. Moderator, under Article 21, you mean without a vote of town meeting?
That's what he said in the recommendation.
Right. So in theory, there's a statute, Chapter 44, Section 53A, that allows the board of selectmen to accept and expend, or to authorize the expenditure of any grant or gift given to the town solely for the purpose of the grant or gift with no legislative action. Similarly, the school committee has the ability to accept and authorize expenditure of any gift given to the town for school purposes. However, there are some grants, federal grants, where they look to see language like this because they don't know the laws in every single state. So this is a standard article that is included, basically based on historical practice.
So if they received a gift from a private citizen, say, of $10,000 to be used to the fire department, for an example, then the selectmen, the board of selectmen would be able to take that $10,000 and move it to the fire department without coming... They wouldn't be able to move it, say, to the library fund or anything like that. It would have to be, it would have to be in that fund.
Mr. Moderator, the statute is very specific. The money that's given can only be used for the purpose for which it is donated.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 23. To see if the town will vote to appropriate all funds which become available in the fiscal year 2019 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Highways, Chapter 90, bond issued proceeds to be used by the DPW for the repair and maintenance of town roads in ordinance of Massachusetts General Law, and further the town vote to raise and appropriate by borrowing and authorize the town treasurer the approval of the board of selectmen to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore anticipated in the receipt said state aid or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article 23 as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends favorable action on Article 23.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 24. To see if the town will vote to pursue to the provisions of General GL, Section 44, Section 53E and a half, as most recently amended and established fiscal year 2019, spending limits for the revolving funds listed in Section 6 of the bylaw of the same name, all as set forth below, which such expenditures limited to by application for each fiscal year until such time as town meeting votes prior to, prior to July 1 in any year, to change the same for the ensuing fiscal year, provided however that the request of the entity authorized to expend such funds, the board of selectmen which approves of the finance committee may increase such limits as the fiscal year only as set below. You all have the chart in front of you?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article 24 as printed in the warrant.
Does this motion, motion is received support, second. Finance committee, please.
Finance committee recommends favorably on this article.
Is there any... Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article twenty-five, marsh field lease... Oh, excuse me, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a lease agreement with a term or terms of longer than three years for the recreational field used as marsh field located on Palmigusset Road on a two-acre plus or minus proportion of town-owned parcel of land shown as a parcel zero-four-two-a-six on the Rutland Assessors' map, or take any, all actions and execute all documents necessary or appropriate in connection therewith, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, ask that the town approve Article twenty-five as presented.
Second.
Motion made in second, recommendation of the finance, please.
Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article twenty-six, to see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaw by amending the section titled Finance Committee as shown on the handout titled Proposed General Bylaw Annual Town Meeting, May twelve, two thousand and eighteen, or take any action in relation thereto. A motion has been made in second, recommendation of the finance.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article twenty-seven, to see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws by amending the section titled Town Meeting as shown on the handout titled Proposal General Bylaws Annual Town Meeting, May twelve, two thousand and eighteen, or take any action in relation thereto. Motion made in second by Mr. Williams, recommendation of the finance, please.
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article?
Lori Becker, eighteen Crestview Drive. If I'm understanding this one correctly, this makes it so that the annual elections occur right before the meeting, is that true?
Yes, that is correct.
So, in other words, we would be having at the town meeting, the people sitting up there, having been newly elected maybe a couple of days and not able to speak to what's been going on in the town. Just wanted to bring that to people's attention.
Ed Novak, thirty-one Marjory Lane. I'd also like to bring to the public body's attention here that the meeting night would be moved from a Saturday night to a Monday night, and it'd be the Monday of the week following the election. So, the town officers would be voted in the week prior, sitting up here, and we'd have the meeting, which could run into the wee hours of the night, taking place on a weeknight, say, weekend.
Is there any other discussion on this article?
I just want to respond, those are good points, and I don't know that anybody's going to be swayed if you feel that you like Saturday, you're always going to like Saturday, if you feel that you like a weeknight, you're always going to like a weeknight. I just want to respond to specifically Ed's comment. This is a business meeting, we do not have any other town meetings on nights other than traditional business nights, Monday through typically Thursday. There are once in a while Saturday morning meetings, but they are fairly rare. And to Lori's point about people who will be up here without experience, keep in mind that we are all staggered, so you don't have ever a full board of new people. At most, it would be two new people, so I would consider that sort of a non-issue. And I think also the other reason that it's a non-issue is that this isn't our meeting, this is the moderator's meeting, it's your meeting, and having a couple of new faces up here, once the budget materials are done anyway, really wouldn't matter. We've gone back and forth with this for years, and, you know, you could really go fifty-fifty. I would argue fundamentally that this is a business meeting and should be on a business day, business night.
We would like to speak to the gentleman who's seven, he's running for the small hours that's included in this bylaw, that the meeting is adjourned at twelve o'clock, run no later than midnight, and be recessed until the next night.
Any other discussion on this article?
Mr. Moderator, we're a farming community, and everybody here, for the most part, unless you're retired, has a job, to move this meeting to a Monday in the evening when you're coming home after an eight-hour shift, or a ten-hour shift, whatever you're working to, and then to be here till the max hours of midnight doesn't make a lot of sense to me. This is a farming community, was established as a farming community, and Saturday night is a free night that most people can come out and devote a certain number of hours to be able to participate in what is the fundamental open meeting community that we have. And this is a fundamental, each person comes out, one vote, cast one person, everybody gets counted. To go to a Monday evening, to me, does not make sense, along with the fact, as brought out earlier, that you have a new board trying to defend the budget, Grant, you, the town comm, and the town administrator have parts to it. Mr. Bracebridge was instrumental in trying to change this, and I think we did it high information, memory serves me right, this is our third or fourth year where we've actually had the elections, and then, you know, we've had the town meeting, and then the elections first fire sequence. So, it's up to you, you're the voters, which night would you rather be here?
Mr. Purcell. It was difficult to see, I apologize, Mr. Purcell.
Oh, sorry, I'm so short. Oh, the heck with it. Edward Purcell, Salsaguana Road. It says here that it would decrease the time limit... No, I'm sorry, not that. Increases the quorum number from ten to thirty. Is this for special town meetings as well as this meeting?
That is correct.
Follow-up, do we often run into a situation where we have so few people at special town meetings that that might be an issue?
Since I have been here as moderator, that is incorrect, we have always had more than thirty voters.
Thank you.
Mr. Canacchioli, do you want to visit while you're there?
Mr. Panto's brought it up. I believe when we were selectmen, Doug, the election was before the town meeting, right? And it just changed the last couple of years. And why Saturday has been the town meeting, it goes back to the old days, the seventeen, eighteen hundreds. The day was a family day, and I would love to, if we're going to keep it a Saturday, I think we should move towards making it a family days. There were picnics out in the fields, there was games played, and then the voters, men in those days, you women weren't allowed to vote, we men were sexist back then, we men went into the, went into the meeting and conducted meeting business. So, I prefer going to Monday, but if we're going to stay to Saturday, let's do a, let's do a family day. I think that would be great.
Jennifer Plank, nine Jonathan Circle. Just to reiterate, like, my kids are sitting over there, we were here at six o'clock, they haven't had dinner. I can't do this on a school night when I come home after work and try to feed my family and be where I feel that I need to be. I don't like Saturday nights, it kind of stinks, but the reality is, is it works, and I think it works for a lot of us with sports and working. And to be here and know that my children are over there without dinner, but at least not having to get up and go to school the next morning, makes it a little bit more palatable that it can run till midnight on a Saturday night and we'll be okay, but that's, just wanted to kind of put my voice out there as to why I appreciate it on Saturday nights.
Laura Lynn Waymoth, seven Briarwood Road. If we had the meeting after the ballot vote, and we voted at the meeting to, say, pass the school budget contingent on an override, when would that happen? Would we have to go to the polls again?
A special election would have to be scheduled.
And the cost of that?
It costs a lot of money.
What's the, what would be the cost?
Six...
Thank you.
Six thousand dollars. Just, folks, just an FYI, if someone chooses to do it, you could make an amendment, if, for example, someone wants to have the meeting on Saturday night, but like the other changes, you can make an amendment if you chose to. That is correct. Is there any other discussion on the article? Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of the article, as it reads, please raise your cards. All those opposed, same sign. I believe the motion is defeated. Mr. Canacchioli, can you work on planning the family day for next year? You're going to help him. To see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws by adding a section titled Membership Requirement as shown on the handout entitled Proposed General Bylaws Annual Town Meeting, May twelve, two thousand and eighteen, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article twenty-eight as printed in the warrant.
Motion made in second, recommendation of the finance, please.
Finance Committee recommends favorably on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Step to the side, please. Thank you.
Paul Mattson, Birchwood Road. I have only one thought on this whole thing, and that is the fact that a lot of people who live in this town, for some reasons, like maybe seniors have gone to another town to live with their children or whatever, and have been effectively serving on committees and continue to serve on committees in the town and serve very well, find themselves shut out by this rule. And I just kind of think that there is some more consideration that should be given to these people. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to twenty-nine. Didn't put a check there, I apologize. To see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws by amending the section entitled Accounting and Collecting as shown on the handouts entitled Proposed General Bylaw Annual Meeting, May twelve, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article twenty-nine as printed in the warrant.
Motion's been made in second by Mr. Canacchioli, recommendation of the finance, please.
Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article thirty, to see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaw by adding a section titled Stretch Code as shown on a handout titled Proposed General Bylaws Annual Town Meeting, May twelve, two thousand and eighteen, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article thirty as printed on the warrant.
Does this motion receive support? Motion made in second by Mr. Williams, recommendation by finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article?
I believe we have a guest speaker here.
We have a representative from somebody, do we need to listen to him or not? I mean, nothing against you, sir. Do we need to listen to somebody talk about the stretch code?
Yes, this has been a rather controversial discussion in town, and so...
He's not going to stretch his talk, correct?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Jim Berry. I live in Belcher Town, Massachusetts. In two thousand and nine, I was a selectman in the town of Belcher Town, Massachusetts, when the Green Communities Program was created. I investigated the Green Communities Program because if you become a green community, you have access to funds that only green communities have access to, and you can use those funds to spend on energy efficiency projects in municipal buildings, and if you save energy in the school on lights, for instance, then you will save money on the electric bill. And I was very much interested in that as a selectman, so I became knowledgeable on the topic, and here I am talking about one of the five criteria you have to jump through in order to become a green community. The stretch code is a... Should I face the audience, or would you like to?
I'd like you to face me.
Well, there you go.
I feel important that way.
Well, there you go.
You can talk to them, it doesn't matter to me, sir.
If he doesn't care, then I do.
Two minutes are up, sorry.
The stretch code is an amendment to the building code, and in two thousand and nine, it required more energy efficiency features be put into a brand-new house than the standard building code. It was a bit of a stretch to build a new house, the stretch code, because it took more insulation, better windows, more efficient heating systems. And in two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, it took a little bit more effort. Builders were a bit concerned about what's it going to cost, how am I going to do it? But it basically was looking forward to the next version of the building code. The building code changes every three years or so, so we were looking forward to two thousand and twelve code, and in two thousand and fourteen, actually, because it took a while to get there, in two thousand and fourteen, the standard building code did evolve, it was revised, it includes most of what was in the stretch code at the time. So, if you have new homes built in your town, which is a non-stretch code town, built to the standard building code as of July two thousand and fourteen, these new homes are built with more insulation, better windows, better energy heating system, so that your new homes are almost built to stretch code already. The stretch code is a bit more of a stretch today, it costs a bit more to build to stretch code today, but there are mass save rebates, so pay for that, and the savings you make month after month, year after year, on the electric bill or the oil bill offsets the extra cost, and if you don't pass the stretch code, you're not eligible to become a green community. So, it only affects brand-new homes, it's a bit of a stretch, it does not affect an existing home for an addition, renovation, or repairs. I can speak for hours on this, I probably won't be allowed to, but if you have specific questions, the moderator may allow me to answer them. Is that fair?
Are there any discussion on this? Is there any discussion on this?
Ed Novak, thirty-one Marjory Lane. The gentleman mentioned this is part of one of the five steps required to be a green community. The question is, what are the other four steps, and is that something the town is pursuing?
Two hours to answer the four other items, no. Do you really? Sorry, sorry. The town is well on the way of meeting the other four requirements. One revolves around having an energy plan, so we know how much energy we actually use in our town buildings, let's keep a track of it, let's focus on it, let's think about what we would do if we had the money to reduce our energy, so you have to have a plan. You also have to, the selectmen have to pass a fuel-efficient vehicle policy that says if they procure new vehicles in the future, there will be energy-efficient vehicles. If practicable, we don't require you to put a snowplow on a Prius. We don't... I think we met the first requirement, yes. So, and criteria one and two have already been met by your town.
And there's one more that we've met, and that's the large-scale solar bylaw that's already in place.
Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? Hearing none, all those in... Oh, I'm sorry, sir. Nope, there's a gentleman moving.
Yes, Peter Pacer, 44, Maple Ave. Is this in relation to town buildings, or is this in relation to all buildings in the town?
The building code relates to all new construction, municipal or private, or commercial. Commercial buildings over 100,000 square feet are impacted. Commercial buildings less than 100,000 square feet are not. And it's new construction.
Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? Hearing not, all those in favor, please signify by voting. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. At this time, Sheila Dibbs is asked to speak.
I apologize, I know it's getting late. I hope you will take the time to consider this. I am making a motion to reconsider Article 8, that is, the municipal budget, at the request of the town administrator. I hereby move to reduce the line for benefits and insurance by the sum of $15,311.79.
Oh, the original motion has to be to reconsider. You're trying to make the motion. So you may want to use that to speak of, so, under discussion.
You need to explain it first.
But let's get a second first. A motion has been made and seconded to reconsider.
Article 8.
Article 8. At this time, I'd like to ask Sheila to explain her reasoning.
This was at the request of the town administrator. We are going to be asking for the body to reduce the line item for benefits and insurance by the sum of $15,311.79. That is a cushion amount in case we had a town employee who needed a family benefits package. We don't have that person right now, so we're essentially taking that cushion away if we need it, if we have an employee that comes on or an employee that asks for insurance at any point, including tomorrow, or, excuse me, including July 2nd, we would have to deal with this in the fall. We will also be asking to reduce the salary line for the town administrator by $6,919.66. This will allow us to increase the lines for town employees to reflect the wage corrections that are proposed in your FY19 recommended budget. It'll also authorize the town accountant to allocate those amounts. So the documents that you want to be looking at are the contingent budget reductions. The attempt here is to make whole the wage adjustments for our support staff by these two changes. This will not affect the hourly reductions, so anything that you saw that was an hourly increase, like the children's librarian, will not happen, but it will make whole the wage adjustments for our non-unionized staff.
So the motion on the floor is to reconsider Article 8. Is there any discussion on the motion to reconsider? Or we're only talking about to reconsider at this time?
No, I know, but the reason why we're reconsidering and what's being done through that reconsideration, I'm kind of speechless myself. I'm floored at the generosity of the town administrator to offer up her livelihood, her own salary, for the benefit of the employees in this town. To me, that's tremendous. I want to give her a round of applause.
Is there any other discussion on this article? I'll sit. Is there any discussion on this article? So at this time, we are just voting to reconsider Article 8. A favorable vote allows us to go back to make a motion to what's similar, similar to what Sheila just stated, and a no vote is not to go back to Article 8. All those in favor of reconsidering Article 8, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. So at this time, I would entertain a motion that you propose.
Thank you. I move to reduce the line for benefits and insurance on Article 8 by the sum of $15,311.79, and to reduce the salary line for the town administrator by $6,919.66, and to increase the lines for town employees to reflect the wage corrections proposed in the FY19 recommended budget, and to authorize the town accountant to allocate such amounts to appropriate accounts accordingly.
Mr. Moderator, since I helped draft that, I should say I left out to say and further to approve the FY19 contingent reduced budget as otherwise as printed in the warrant.
Motion was made and seconded by Mr. Clark. Recommendation of the Finance? I guess you can't because you didn't vote on it. So then, we're not going to listen to them right now on this, because they're not in meeting, they can't, they can't do that. Is there any discussion on the motion that Sheila has made? Mr. Kanakioli, you'll be first. Rachel, you'll be second, please. You're first, Mr. Kanakioli. Your hand went up first, as I saw.
I, too, would like to applaud the town administrator, but I have a question. I'm okay with the $15,000. I'm not okay with the $6,000. And so my question to the finance board is, what do we have in free cash or contingency fund, reserve fund, right now? What is that? Is it 100,000?
She said 50,000 earlier in tonight's meeting.
Okay. And...
That's free cash.
That's free cash. Next year, I'm sorry. That's free cash. And what do we have in reserves?
Stabilization. Is that the question?
No. No, not stabilization.
Stabilization, whatever, whatever the term you're using.
Stabilization? What are you talking about?
Well, I know we have 50,000 of free cash. Is there any other fund that we have in reserves in case we, emergency comes up? Stabilization fund?
We can't use that for wages.
Okay. You can't use that for wages. Okay. All right. Thank you. I would recommend that, that we use the $15,000. I can understand that if there's, there's no need to use that right now. But I don't like to see someone giving up their wages. I would recommend that we vote the $15,000 part, vote down the $6,000 part, give her the money that she deserves, and then we take the money out of, out of the free cash, and we use it to pay the wages. I think that's the more appropriate way to do it, where everybody gets paid. The, the support staff gets, gets a raise, and the town administrator continues. And as, and in the spirit of trying to help out, if we're talking about $6,000, I will commit right now $1,000 to that $6,000 to go into the wage fund. So all you have to do is take out of free cash is $5,000, and let her have her money.
May I? So, if I may, so I appreciate what you're saying. I don't, I didn't enjoy having to read this, and I agree with you. And I can say to you right now that I, at least, will certainly make every effort at Fall Town Meeting to make sure that her salary is made whole. I don't think this was the way to go. She has requested it, and so I am presenting it, and I appreciate that she requested it. To your question about the amounts, it didn't just come out of thin air. It makes whole all of the wage adjustments for the employees that were affected. So if we take out a little bit here and there, take out her salary, but only take the $15,000 from health insurance, which I get what you were saying, it doesn't help the problem we had. This does the bare minimum of helping the problem we had, and I'm hoping we can fix that other problem that we just corrected later. Yeah.
You mentioned earlier about the uncertainty with the state. You were kind of suggesting that maybe things may change with the state. We may be getting more money. Okay? We're, we're, in a year or two, we're going to, our debt exclusions, our debt problems are coming down. I don't want to see her take a $6,000 wage because it takes years and years and years to make up that loss in wages in any retirement package that all of us like to enjoy when we finally give up our world of work. And I still think the better way of doing it is taking $5,000 out of, out of the free cash, let her keep her $6,000. I applaud her for, for what she wants to do, but she has expenses, and we can do it another way.
Rachel, just...
I'd just like to make a point that she, that the town administrator has already voluntarily taken a reduction in her salary as, as the current standard. In addition to what she's now offering to save town employees' salaries, so...
Rachel Dolan, Ware Road. I also like to thank you, Margaret. I think that's extremely generous of you to even offer. My only concern, I, do we have positions right now? Don't we have some open positions in DPW? Are they full-time? So if we hire those people, are you saying if we hire somebody who has a family who needs health insurance, we're not going to have the money to, to do that?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to come back in the fall to find that money. I'll give you a possibility here, and I hate to revisit this, but it gets a little bit back to the amendment we had offered much earlier. If we know for sure that, or if we knew for sure that the school committee were going to return any additional state aid that they might get, whether it's transportation, MLC, whatever, back to the town's budget, we would be in a position of knowing that we could make a lot of this whole again. We can plug the money back into the health insurance, we can plug the money back into Margaret's salary. We don't know that for sure. We hope that that would happen. They haven't acted on that yet. This isn't ideal, but we knew once the school budget passed that we weren't dealing with, you know, that compromise sort of ideal that we were hoping for. I, I agree. There's a, there's a lot of different places that we could take the money. They're all not great. I, I see where you're headed, Louis.
I guess my, my, my basic question is, we're not going to be denying anyone health benefits.
Oh, absolutely not. Absolutely not.
Going on due to this.
No, absolutely not.
That was my only clarification.
No, sorry. Thank you.
Is there any other question?
Mr. Moderator, just a quick statement. I'd like to echo my thanks on behalf of the town to Margaret for her generous proposal, but I disagree with Mr. Kanakioli. I think the board is pretty unified that as soon as we know what the final numbers are, this allows us to have a balanced budget, and that's the goal I think Margaret's striving for, and to allow us to move forward from town meeting, and the board, as soon as we know what the final numbers are, can come back and make any adjustments necessary to ensure that there's full equity.
Is there any other discussion on this? Is there any other discussion on this? Does everyone understand the motion that Sheila has made? All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. For housekeeping rules, since we did on Article 8, I believe, we have to go back to Article 2 to make a motion to, we don't need to, that will be under the same reconsider because Article 8 and Article 2 are affected together? I need a motion on the floor to reconsider Article 2.
Make a motion to reconsider Article 2.
Second.
Can I have a second? Motion's made and seconded to reconsider Article 2. All those in favor, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries to reconsider Article 2.
Make, approve Article 2 as written in the motion.
A motion's made and seconded. Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Ah. It's getting toward that midnight hour, I think. Please raise your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, we're going to go back to Article 31. Article 31, to allow the town of Walton, Massachusetts to adopt Chapter 41, Section 797A of Massachusetts General Law, also known as Strong Chief Statute relating to the powers and duties of the chief of police.
Jeff Stillings, Lord Lane. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to adopt Chapter 41, Section 97A of the Massachusetts General Law, also known as the Strong Chief Statute relating to the powers and duties of the chief of police.
A motion, a motion's made and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee doesn't recommend favorable or unfavorable because it's a citizen's petition, and we didn't have enough information to take any action.
Would you like to, is there any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Please.
Jeff Stillings, Lord Lane. My fellow townspeople approving this article will transfer the authority to make suitable regulations governing the police department from the Board of Selectmen to the police chief. The police chief will then have the authority to set rules, regulations, and policy subject to approval by the Board of Selectmen, giving them 30 days to review. In addition, the strong chief gives the police chief a limited authority to assign respective duties to his officers. I would also like to note that the fire department transitioned to the strong fire chief 22 years ago in 1996. With the exception of the town of Princeton, all our neighboring communities have upgraded the authorities of their police chief to the strong chief. Fellow townsman, I respectfully request a yes vote on Article 31, accepting the strong police chief.
Just a question, and I'm not sure who can answer it, so I'm just going to throw it out there. Maybe the police chief or the board can answer it. Has the current or former police chief ever come to the board requesting that this change in statute take place?
There was a...
Go ahead.
I, I assume you're going to speak to the amendment. A duplicate citizen petition was requested as an article on the warrant, but the citizen's petition had already been submitted, and so our chief withdrew his.
Okay, so what's been by the chief?
Wait a minute, Joe. It was, the original one was not, was submit, not submitted by the chief. It was a citizen petition. The chief brought a petition afterwards. The citizen's petition never came to the board and asked for our backing.
Nick Monaco, Ten Welch, Chief of Police. And just to answer Mr. Becker's question, I did put it on as an article as a department head, then withdrew it as not to duplicate the citizen's petition. So I do, I do support the citizen petition and adoption of Section 97A, the strong chief law. Will transfer a very limited amount of powers and duties from the Board of Selectmen to the chief of police. We're talking about policy decisions, decisions regarding operation, decisions that in a professional police force should be made by a police executive. And I know there were some concerns about citizen oversight and checks and balances. The strong chief law does still give the Board of Selectmen appointing authority, and also gives them that 30-day period to review and approve any policies or regulations that I do bring forward. This is not a major change. It's just an extra tool that I can have on my belt to effectively manage the police department.
Doug Briggs, 77, Maple. I guess the question might be to you also, Nick. The question I have is that we have, again, we never had a strong chief because we never had a town administrator. The town administrator comes in, and her job is to basically run the town. I just look at it and say, are we watering down her capabilities to run the town if a lot of the decisions that would be worked out in combination with the town administrator is now done solely? So basically, he's not working for her anymore, he's just working for the Board of Selectmen. And maybe that's the way it is here.
Margaret, can you speak on that?
I don't see this as watering down or changing the organizational structure at all. In fact, in practice, some of the things that are listed in the strong chief statute with regard to development of policy and then reviewing it, having the board review it, assignments, those are already things that are happening in practice.
Without your...
Right.
Well, you don't have anything to do with it?
Well, with the, with the policies. We haven't had policies come up recently, but I would be a facilitator for that as well.
Just on the adoption of policies, we get all our policies from the Massachusetts Police Chiefs Association, so they're all approved for accreditation, they're all been vetted by professionals, and we wouldn't bring anything other than that to the board for approval, so...
Article?
I guess a housekeeping item. This is a citizen's petition. You know, things have to be approved at a state level that's approved at a town meeting. This, this particular language, I assume because it's a citizen's petition, has not been vetted by town council? Do we have any concern that if this passes tonight, that it may not hold water at the state level when everything gets approved from the town meeting?
Mr. Moderator, through you. The statute is a local acceptance statute. This is the manner in which it needs to be voted, and it is acceptable from my perspective in terms of what the state would be looking for.
Jeff Stillings, Lord Lane. The language for the citizen's petition was taken nearly verbatim from the 1996 strong fire chief language that a citizen presented to the townspeople to accept strong fire
Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 32, to see if the town will vote to name the town building department office after longtime building inspector Mr. Harry C. Johnson, Jr., or take any action in relation there, too?
Mr. Moderator, Luke Canacchioli, this is my petition. Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to name the town's building inspector's office after Mr. Harry C. Johnson, Jr.
Has a motion been made and seconded? Seconded. Recommendation of the Finance?
Finance Committee recommends favorably.
Thank you. Just very quickly, Mr. Johnson, for those of you who may not know who he was, recently passed away. He was a building inspector for well over 30 years. He was a gentleman and quite a great individual. It will be a simple sign that would be approved by town administrator or the selectmen, so it's not going to take away from over the doorway of the building inspectors. And I will pay for the cost of the sign, which I'm sure will be minimal because it's not going to be a gigantic sign with neon lights and everything. And I will make sure with the approval of the town administrator that it gets installed, so it should cost the town of Rutland $0.00. And I would hope that you would support me on this. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 33, to choose a necessary town offices and committee. At this time is when the town moderator appoints his finance member boards. At this time, there are three seats that are currently up. Karen Norwell is up, and she has been reappointed to go on to the three-year term. Also, Tommy Richallers' term is up, and he has agreed to stay on for another three years. Karla Abindu, second from the end, has chose to step down and enjoy life a little more, not doing town numbers, and Karla will be retiring. And at this time, Karla's position will be filled by Brian Stitson for a three-year term. And then we did have a resignation of Debbie Carlson, who has time commitments. Kristoff. Again, it's getting late. I'm sorry. Debbie Kristoff has resigned, and in her spot will be Carol Martins, who will be going on as a one-year term for Debbie. Other than that, I don't believe we need to do anything else tonight. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Yes, Mr. Ross. As a group, I'd like to thank Karla Abindu for her years of service helping the town. And I'd like to wish everyone...